...of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Welcome to approve the agenda.
We have to cancel something first.
Oh, what are we canceling?
We're canceling Kyle Emmett with the watershed basin discussion. He sent an email, "The weather's too bad, he will not be here." So we'll reschedule.
So we're striking that?
Yep.
That's the nine thirty?
Yep.
Geez, look, we're gonna get outta here way earlier now.
Look at the bottom there.
Uh-huh, 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 uh-huh.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Got it all.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda, striking the nine thirty docket, as printed past that.
All right, I'll second that amended motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Through the minutes.
Well, you did get your correction made?
Yes.
Okay, pass that, I've read through them, everything else looks to be in order, motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. General public concern. To both or anybody who'd be here. Let's catch claims right quick and then we'll get with Dean.
I'm rooting down. I looked at him, I never wrote the total down.
Nine nine eight fifty-four oh nine I got. And draining to twenty-six four seven eight twenty-eight.
Okay, I'll make the motion for those figures for...
Would you say on the...
Nine nine three fifty-four oh nine?
Nine nine eight five four oh nine.
So the eight or is it the three? Let's look at 'em again.
I may have written it down wrong, 'cause I was in the three when I was writing it down last night.
No, you're not.
What do we end up have to do to the boiler? Nine nine eight five four oh nine.
Okay, you got the record.
Right, yeah. It was three up here, it's nine down here.
Oh, because there was a hundred and...
Nine nine eight five four oh nine.
That's general?
That's the general.
Okay, what's your...
I got the wrong, yeah. Twenty-six four seven eight twenty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
Draining.
That was correct. I'll make the motion with those numbers.
I would second those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. Let me get rid of that. Dean, you're up.
Dean, can you also begin on that?
Morning, Dean.
Dean.
Somebody rammed it under.
That's just one.
Did you get one?
No, I have to get one today.
Yep.
The annual budget, just a reminder, is seventy-six thousand for the veterans. Second quarter budget, nineteen thousand fifty-nine dollars. The expenditures was only fifteen nine ninety-six, so we were almost thirty-one hundred dollars below our second quarter budget. The second page of that is where we spent some of our money with the veterans on rent, Mid-America, utilities, and a food voucher that we give them. Rent budget was five thousand dollars, second quarter we only spent three thousand. Mid-America, the budget was fifteen fifty, and we spent fourteen sixty-six. Utilities, budget was nine hundred, we spent seven ninety-two. And food vouchers, the budget's six fifty, we spent two forty-eight. So the second quarter, we're well below... Between the first and second quarters, we're up over, under, we're six thousand dollars below our budget right now. So we're doing extremely well this year so far.
Is that, why is the drastic drop in the rent? I mean, you got five thousand budgeted and only been using three to four thousand.
Over the last couple, two, three years, we really matched out that twenty thousand. So suddenly, this year, the number of people that are going for, based on need, is, it's based on need.
But I mean, that's...
Good, yeah.
Means that they're probably working somewhere or something.
And for this quarter right now, we talked about this before, the Mid-America through the upper Des Moines, they're getting assistance...
By heat?
By heat, so for the next couple of months, the Mid-American bills will be less because of that allocation.
To that water and stuff.
Yeah. And right now, every month, we're, we probably average around seven veterans that come in and need some type of assistance. And it's going with the rent, the food, the utilities, the Mid-America. And we do give quite a few veterans rides to Des Moines or to the clinic in Fort Dodge, transportation, to go to the hospital or to the clinic down there. And that has steadily gone up, we're doing more of that. And I think we're doing more of that because I've been publicizing it more too, that that's available to them. The pending claims we have, right now is twenty-one in pending claims. Sandy is, those veterans that are applying for a service-connected disability, whether it was last year or whether it was fifty years ago, still a service-connected disability. And right now, we have twenty-one of those that are pending with the DA. Now of those twenty-one, there's three appeals, and an appeal is, just as a sound, they've been, they went with the claim, it's been denied, they've gone back a second time, and they had a denial again, and then it goes into the appeal process. And the appeal process is take up to three years, five years, before they finally get a decision.
I remember you told us about that before, Dean.
Yeah, yeah. And then, of course, tinnitus and hearing are still high, that's a national, that's a national with tinnitus and hearing, they're always high, and they're always poor big, because that's a service-connected disability that is very prominent among veterans. And I have three that have service connected for broken bones. We have, I've got one that has a TBI, which is traumatic brain injury, that's had some issues, and he has a claim on that. I have three pensions, and one is applying for CHMBA, and that's a medic, that's additional supplemental insurance, that is with the government. And just to give you an idea of veterans in the US today, a couple of years ago, there was twenty-two million veterans in the US, and that's down to twenty, twenty million now. In Iowa, in 2013, there was two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand veterans, today there's two-hundred-and-eleven thousand. So that's dropped, which doesn't surprise me because of the number of veterans that are serving today opposed to Vietnam.
Our forces are smaller than they used to be.
Well, plus you'd factor in that a lot of those folks have passed away.
Yeah. And World War II vets, we're down...
Not many left.
We're down seven hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And we have a World War II veteran, never has ever used the system before, and he used it for the first time, he's ninety-two years old.
Yeah.
First time he's ever used it.
Wow.
So... In Humboldt County, right now, there's around seven-hundred-and-fifty veterans, that's what they determine. And five years ago, there was about eight-hundred-and-twenty. And the interesting fact, and a lot of people in my position use this all the time, I don't, but I thought you could bring up, because of the pending claims and the amount of money that is given back to the veterans, in twenty-seven, I don't have the 2018 numbers yet, but that generates around two million dollars back into the county, into our county. Depending on how big a county is, of course, you know, like, Des Moines has, they have over a hundred thousand veterans. So the amount of money they bring in there is a lot different.
Yeah.
And I don't put a lot of stock in that, but it is a figure that's out there, so... And that's all I really have, so... Any other questions, Sandy?
About the digest? No, no.
Thank you, Dean. All right, I'll make a motion to accept and place on file the VA quarterly report for the period ending December thirty-first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry.
Thank you, Dean. Keep up the good work.
I see guys with a spring lens, and that's up. Do that.
Yeah.
See you later.
See you later. Jenna?
I'm not late.
Yeah, that way you can go back to work.
Yep.
Get you out of the way.
I have, I like to review our depositories each year, and I did check with the sheriff's office, the recorder's office, on institutions they're using and their limits that are required. And these are the adjustments I'd like to make, along with relating to that, then as well, we'll have a resolution, since I've never used, I pay, Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust, they have a document for utilizing their services. Don't know if I will, but I just wanna have that available. They do offer better rates at certain times of the year, and short-term daily money. It's an investment that public agencies can use. I know the city of Humboldt uses it and a lot of other county treasurers, and I've just never had it set up, so I thought I'd at least get it available. Any questions?
You got a resolution naming the depositories? We got a copy of that?
That law, yeah, that legal change. An increase, mainly due to our budget increase of half of the life, and I need the money covered in the sinking fund.
Do we need a motion to accept this?
Yep.
I would make that motion to accept it. Authorize Dave's signature on it too then, or...
As long as you approve the resolution.
Just approve the resolution then.
Any other discussion on that? You broke all of them.
You don't need to, it's always been our, if everybody votes I and nobody votes Nate, then that's how...
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry.
There you have it.
Do you want me to sign, wanna get it back to you?
Okay.
Okay, good.
And then the other one, support approval, we can get the signatures later, that also is... Deputy Treasurer Janet Penninger and I on the account. Me first.
I'll make a motion to approve the Public Agency Investment Trust preparation.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry.
All right, thank you.
Ever since the gas signal, you get it loud.
You wanna cover up?
No.
Okay, Janet?
Thank you. Sure.
Were you cheering too loudly for something, or did you just get, picked up a bug?
Yeah. They're coming on. We better talk through this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm trying to work out here, my annual school sweep. Well, this year, we employed eleven people, eight of them regular, three of them part-time, all young, I guess one older person, who's our manager. We don't foresee any big problems coming here, hopefully our pipes hold, so nothing busts away, because that would be a sad day. But I'd like to continue since we're giving the sixteen hundred dollars you have in the pack. The only problem we see coming up with the next year is employment.
That's what we hear is usually the issue.
There's no kids that want to work.
I think they have that right here.
Huh?
They have the same thing down here, where people mad...
Yeah, and now they have their rec center open.
Harder, yeah.
And they're starting at twelve bucks an hour, and we thought we were good, just starting at nine dollars an hour, and we won't get them, but look at that. But that's, you don't have lifers, you can't have a pool.
Can't open.
Or you have to limit your days, you don't want to open Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, you know what I mean? And those will be rainy.
Yeah, typical, how it goes.
Okay. So that, I don't want to get you running a little bit behind, so I don't want to take up too much more of your time, but I have two more things for you. I talked to Floyd Rainey, he is the head of our old settlers down in Livermore, the old settlers park, and they don't know if you know what tree fell on the, and they're estimating ten thousand dollars to repair that. And Floyd keeps, do you know Floyd? And he keeps dragging along, thinking that it's gonna solve itself, and it's just not solving itself. So if you even have like five hundred dollars in the budget that you could donate towards that rough, your estimate's ten thousand dollars. And I told him I should get on that Humboldt County grant, but nobody did it, and they still have to come up with five thousand dollars, so...
So that's out north?
That's, it's right actually...
West of town on the Gru?
Yeah.
Well, it's right next to the park.
It's right next to the park there, and the counties want to close, they mow it for that all the time, because they're mowing that half and they mow that little half there, and they, I guess the bathrooms on there actually belong to the county, except that's on those settlers' land, they made an agreement with them, fine, and you know, and everything goes well. We supply water out there, the city does, at no charge for them, and you know, if you do have that extra, that would be fantastic. And the last thing, just to zip into Pioneer a little bit.
Oh, you're doing double duty, that's right.
I'm doing three, yeah. So zip into Pioneer, just a quick thing, I'm going up to talk to John today. Joanne fell last night, and they're talking, she's in the hospital, I was two nights ago, she's in the hospital. And I don't know if you know, so I'll have to prepare a budget this year. They can spend whatever money, so this might be coming out real faster than you want it to. So you're closing down, and what the county wants to do with the water, what you want to do with the streets, you know, I thought I had time to do all that. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and decided to close all the alleys. We'll close all the alleys, we'll vacate and allocate to the property, not have a problem...
Joyce's landowners.
Yeah, if that part is on the street, I'll be landlocking people if I close streets.
Can't do that.
I know, I can't do that, so I'm gonna talk to John about that too. And they kind of figured out which lights they wanted. Is that, Sandy, is that your district?
Yes, my district, yes.
So the person you replaced was supposed to go over there and check it out and give his opinion.
They did.
They did.
He did?
He went with Ben then.
And so...
I'm sorry, yeah, we looked at it and we thought, you know, in reality, we could see three lights up there in that area. I don't know how many of the people in town were wanting, but there's like fifteen there now.
Yeah, they wanted at least three on Main Street, one on the elevator, and going that way, and they don't want to close Market Street at all, because they, because you can't landlock all those people, and the elevator uses that, because they use the, like, that street just will not be able to close, because the whole, one side, it belongs to like fifty different people.
Is that north of the elevator?
Yeah, and the elevator uses that road all the time. So like, that, that street just will not be able to be closed. I mean, that's impossible. The other one, Kevin Stein owns a lot of land, which we can close apart, but I don't know, the street closing isn't gonna be as simple plan as we think. But the, the alleys were on the way, we're gonna close all them. So there'll be no maintenance on those, no nothing there, that'll be gone, and all the street lights are on the outside of that, I mean, those all might as well go. They are all LED at this time. It's already been replaced and everything's done that way, but, and then the water well. So...
How many houses are actually being left?
Three. Has any, you talked about, do you think there are any houses, is there anything going on with that? Well, Kevin Stein owns most of them. And Tammy, I can't think of her name right now, she owns, I think, the old hotel thing. Oh, yeah, there's a lot of junk there. And we won't even talk about the junkyard.
We wanna talk about it.
Yeah. There's gonna be...
We're gonna take it over, we want that gone.
Do you think you can get rid of a junkyard that's been established that long?
If they're not using, if they're not junking out of it...
They do.
They're still working it? Okay.
It's working, it's working more on weekends now, because Ivan's house is failing, that's why I'm here in the first place, as I know John has a full-time job, so it's one weekend that he's working on it.
Okay, we use under the impression that it was not being junked out anymore, nobody was working it, so...
I can't say Ivan's working it, but I can say that John works it.
Okay.
Yeah, the issue there is, they're junking almost through. And I've mentioned that to him, I was like, Ivan, you gotta get that back, you gotta get that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I mean, you're going over, going over Randy Bundy, but that's a little different road, that's one sixty-nine versus county road, but...
Phil?
Actually, we got more authority over county roads than we want to.
You have authority, yeah, but you know, they do need to keep it within the right-of-way. Out of the right-of-way, I should say.
Bingo.
Yeah, they need to keep it out of the right-of-way, yeah.
So you said this is moving along quicker than you thought, but there's still these issues, the well's still being bigger, one of them?
The well has its own fund, if I understood you the last time.
It does.
Yeah.
You know, you could, I was gonna talk to John about just moving those funds into, moving their funds over at the end of the fiscal period, left on the fiscal year-end report. You could move over and you'd have to take it over. I mean, I think there would be a hundred thousand dollars there. I believe that somebody will continue to live in Ivan and Joanne's house, it's a nice little house, I don't think it would be, I think that residence will stay. You don't have to go to the care center, I thought it was gonna be down to two.
Which money is in the water fund?
I don't, I'd have to go back and...
That's quite a bit.
That's what I was thinking.
I don't think there's a, I mean, you have your general, but we could move money from general into water too.
Like the last time we talked to City, you could move money over.
I can move money over into the water fund, as you do any transfers, the city clerk, you could do that. I don't know how we wanna sit and what we wanna do there. I don't know how much money it's gonna take to do the rest of the stuff, so...
There's three active households in Pioneer.
Mm-hmm. I'd say about dozen people. And you have the elevator.
Yeah.
And they just ran new water lines to the elevator.
Okay.
So I would like to John now, if you have a minute.
Yeah, just sever some land too, if you wanna go over there.
Oh, yeah.
You wanna look at that one?
Mm-hmm.
Would it make sense, when you feel better and the weather's better, and everybody can coordinate, that Sandy, Janet, Ben, because he has some familiarity, get together and go physically look at all this and...
Yeah, I think we should.
Sure.
I mean, it's your district, you've already got Janet completely aware of it, she has all the information, and then, so that maybe, because like you said, this is all kind of...
I ran off what everybody owns, own.
Okay.
And that's the problem up there.
If I'm...
And it's on Wesley, you know.
Which...
And now we can't landlock Kevin Stein into going to his property, because, yeah.
If I remember right, we, we make a loop on the north side, and then we run the long pavement on the south side, correct? For south.
That's about it, yeah. I mean, you don't do much, just go around, and then you go down, and come back, or at least you do Main Street, but that's...
Well, because ultimately, the county, the county will end up with whatever's there.
Yeah.
So that's where, if you have to, been there, it'd be good for Sandy to, you know, it is your district, so we can kind of relate, Janet has a figure, because if I'm hearing you correctly, you're thinking maybe by the end of this fiscal year, which is the end of June?
They're gonna be stubborn about it, but if Governor and Ivan go to the care center, you know, I don't know if we're gonna conduct our meetings out of a care center. Well, that's not gonna run out of cops, you know how much Ivan does for that money? I mean...
Yeah, he done all that stuff.
He does everything, he does all the water shutups, the water care, I mean, John takes care of the well, but, you know, which is no, mows lawn, which he couldn't do that this summer, he's on more speed just to get around, and you can't be on that very long before.
No.
Things don't work right.
So your statement's correct, it's sooner than later.
Yeah, so you know, we're sitting there, they don't know if we even need to have an election, you know.
That's what I was gonna check, 'cause I think you do.
Yeah.
Is that coming up?
Oh, yeah. I have it every two years, there are elections, every two years.
But they would have to have a public measure, and...
Yeah, it's gonna take longer to get this shut down than six months.
Yeah.
And you have to do, you have to advertise a public hearing, and everybody has to go and vote, whether they want it shut down, I mean, they've been through this before.
Everyone, you were talking to seven residents.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah. Almost a hundred.
Well, I mean, I'm not trying to...
Wait, wait, are those all adults, or what, voting age?
Oh, you know, three in Strangor Home, you have five over there, and two there, so yeah, you know. Yeah, but, but they need to turn out to go, and they do.
Right.
And here, you just have a hundred percent voting.
Well, I still think it'd be a good idea that, and I think you're right, as far as the legality of it, it might not be possible to get it done into the fiscal year, but you could be at a point where you know what needs to be done.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if you go upstairs, and we have a work session after, so we'll be here, if you and John come up with any plan, we'll be in here, you can come in and... Stop in and interrupt us.
Okay, yeah, we'll see. I don't think we have an idea what's gonna be hitting us, so, oh, that's fine. Okay, and then the next thing was the city of Livermore, they severed that land officially. Do you know what we're talking about?
Yeah, exactly. This is north of Livermore, there's a parcel of land that the city owns, that they no longer want to own.
Okay.
So basically, a lot of stuff...
Yeah, due to the fact it came down to a bridge.
Bridge, it needs...
There's a bridge, and that the county put in city limits, and the county always maintained it, and then the state came in and said it is on, in your, it's your responsibility, and the city can't afford to take care of it. So the city has been doing this since two thousand...
Been a while.
Two thousand, let us go back and forth, I can work, and finally, they've got everything. I don't know, I would assume that you guys need to make a motion and accept this by a resolution or something, I mean, or just accept it.
Yeah, I couldn't get ahold of John to run it by him, so I just put it on the agenda, discussion or accept it.
So you guys did officially unincorporate that portion.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, this is your, this is your information.
I didn't, I saw it this morning, at the very bottom of the agenda.
It's not official official yet, I would say, because I had sent it to the Secretary of State, I had sent it to the DOT, which I said, I don't know if the DOT comes your way, or their, their probably your...
They'll probably contact me a lot, I think.
Yeah, because basically, once they, once the city does their part, it just naturally falls on us.
Right, and then we'll go over the funding that you get per year for the work for the general.
The DOT will have to re-figure that.
We probably don't, we probably don't have to do anything yet until that part gets done by the state, where they accept that it's been set. We probably don't, we probably don't have to do anything yet until that part gets done by the state, where they accept that it's severed.
There's potential, a funding if it's a city bridge out there, but, I mean, once it falls down to state or to county.
It's about town.
It's not in that bad shape, it needs a bridge deck hopefully, probably, but that's about it.
Yeah, it's probably, it just needs to be tested, it's having to be tested.
Well, we test it every two years.
I thought they skipped it.
No, we, we still test it.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, because our previous person says is our hospital standard anymore?
No, we, I guess I've got twenty-sixteens, I don't have the results from twenty-eighteen yet.
Okay. You don't make up my cost, I'm just reading that right.
I'll make sure you get that first.
Sufficiency rating on it right now is just below sixty, I think it's basically fifty-eight. The biggest stain on it, I guess, is the, the bridge that, you can, you can see the, the river rock, the marble link on top, so they're saying there's a little bit of section loss of the concrete.
Structurally, it's good though.
Structurally, it, it still rates six, I think, six and sevens.
Is that a, is that a farm-to-market road?
No.
No. Not a farm-to-market road, so.
I mean, it's, but look how much those cross that bridge.
But the traffic on it, I mean, this is way down the road and all of our bridge discussion stuff, it, it might have, I mean, even if you needed to repair the deck on it, might, is there DOT funding?
No.
No.
There's good traffic count on it, but the, the DOT funding, I, I believe, is only on.
Replacement.
Farm-to-market roads.
Really?
There is potential for BR funding if it, if the sufficiency rating drops low enough. I think the rating is low enough now that you can do a rehabilitation, but I believe it's got to be below forty-five or fifty.
We want to be careful what we wish for.
Yeah.
Because I say worst-case scenario, it might require resurfacing at some point.
Right, and I think that number is, once the sufficiency rating drops below sixty, you can do a rehabilitation, so you could do a redetach.
Oh, okay.
So I mean, I'm just looking at county cost on it, it's, it's, bridge for a bridge, it's, it's not as detrimental as some of the other ones that we're dealing with.
Right. And we've got a lot of high trusses that are, I mean, if I remember right, this one's not even low rated right now.
I think they took down the sign, when they decided it was a city bridge.
I guess that is, the guy that.
I think it did happen.
Haven't asked us to put up the low ratings, but I'll talk to the guy that did on our bridge inspection, let them know that you're in the process of giving this back to the county.
Yeah, then you'll get one run for the thirteen, and then you're nickel for the county.
Okay. Do we, do you need to accept this, or?
We don't have it, no, we don't.
We'll just have a discussion if you want.
I think we'll wait till the state does their portion, and then we'll automatically come to us, and then we'll accept it then.
Okay.
Does that work?
Sure. Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you, okay, we'll talk to you later.
If you know anything from John, let us know.
Yeah, I'm sure he'll have to research and decide whether to dis- or, for you guys, I'll have to reply down the road, I don't know. We'll talk from there.
Thanks.
Thank you, keep considering.
Thanks, Janet.
Okay, Ben.
Yeah, that was a surprise, I didn't see that until this morning. As far as county, I don't think there's anything that we can do.
No, was that, they figured that out a long time ago, it's their, if they go through this process and want to give you something back, then you get it.
Yeah.
That's why I asked, it's not an awful thing, like that bridge is going to fall in tomorrow, so.
No, no.
The true definition of, I got a bridge, we want to give away.
You want to give away a bridge, yeah. It's like the Brooklyn Bridge, I got a bridge to sell you, so we didn't have to pay anything for it, so.
No, I mean, in, in reality, we'll end up getting a little bit more money, because we'll end up getting this.
More land.
Right.
You'll get the taxation, like you said, of, of the property owners. Yeah, no, like I said, there's, there's nothing that we can do about it if the city chooses to unincorporate, or if the, if a city like Humboldt decided that they wanted to.
It's kind of like Pioneer.
They could take more from us. Yeah, and same thing with Pioneer, if they choose to unincorporate.
You end up with a. You can't say you can't do it, because the South, the city spends, right?
You can't say they can't do it, I mean, we can say we're only going to use two lights, as opposed to augment it.
Only clean the snow off this road, but, still.
Which, we are to clean the roads right now, we're not, we're not talking a huge amount of money for the, you know, for, we've already got a guy going through there.
Yeah, just make a, make a lot.
Basically, just making, making a loop and running down and back up.
Don't take long, don't cost much.
While we're there. The only issue is that our equipment keeps getting bigger and bigger, and city streets are usually small, narrow, tight corners, we have trouble negotiating. Uh, the reason I'm here is to get the approval of purchase for two computers for Humboldt County secondary roads. This is a, for a new computer for Sue and Dave, both of their computers are about six years old right now. We purchased them in twenty-thirteen. I got a quote from Computer Works downtown for two desktop computers and Microsoft Office on both of those computers, and the quote was for twenty-three hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
That's total?
Both of them?
That's total, that's for both of them, I mean, the, the cost of Microsoft Office is, it's expensive. I mean, it's two hundred and forty bucks a license for Office, I mean, computers alone are nine fifty.
Is that annual?
No, it's a one-time, one-time cost.
No, I mean, for the, like, the software?
For the software, yeah, the software is a one-time cost.
Is that the reason, I mean, is there a reason you're going with a laptop versus a regular style, or?
We're going with desktop.
Or desktop, I'm, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll make a motion for the purchase of two computers for secondary roads for twenty-three sixty-nine, was it?
Twenty-three sixty-nine ninety, ninety.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ooh, carry.
And then I also brought up a, a copy of the private tile crossing.
Oh, okay, I thought you said that in the beginning.
Yeah, I understand that, uh, there's a private ag tile crossing that's going to be closed over in Avery, and with that, they're probably going to have to run a new tile line. And looking at.
Okay, you want to close your thing?
For.
Is that the one?
Lubin Bowl, up in that area.
Yeah.
You have Lubin Bowl on the way in there. And looking at USGS, it looks like the natural water course would run south to Lannis Pond. So to get to that pond, I guess, basically, they got to cross the roads.
Okay.
Steve would need to fill that out.
Good, well, thank you.
Okay.
That included.
Anything else for me? The, the roads are in good condition right now, I mean, we just got blowing, there's a little bit of drifting in protected areas, but.
Putting the extra additive in their fuel, right? Because it's going to get brutal the next couple of days, where you don't.
We need to talk to W N H and probably get them to give us a hot bash.
I wouldn't get it as hot as you can find it, for three days, it's going to be a mess.
Yeah.
We don't need them out on the road and gel up, and try to figure out how to get them off the road, so.
Yeah.
Rather have them warm than.
I will call W N H when I get back.
Perfect.
Good. It'll be a day or two on this crossing.
Oh yeah, that is.
But, that, this is a private deal. So yeah, they'll get that taken care of. The, the ditch is actually a drainage ditch, it's a ditch, the ditch, you know, that runs along there. And there's some ongoing discussion, really took a hard look at where that outlets. So, it, they're probably going to treat it as a drainage ditch cleanout.
It's in county's right-of-way?
Yes.
Uh, I think we'd probably have to look at that harder.
Well, otherwise, the county's going to clean it out.
Again, I'd have to look at that.
It's a drainage ditch?
Well, it is, that's where, that's where.
This is a drainage district?
That's where DD sixty-two outlets, it has for years and years. And that's the same thing where you're talking about this crossing, is going to outlet into the general area.
So why is it need cleaned?
Because it is backed up, and it is, you know, the flow isn't good.
So are they putting in a private line, or are they tying into DD?
They're putting, this is a private project, why you brought this, you know, where they'll eventually probably have to go across the road to get their outlet.
Okay.
That's where it's going to outlet.
Does DD sixty-two cross the road? I, I guess I'm unfamiliar with it.
Yeah, goes under the road, there's big tiles, been there for years, and years and years. But, yeah, the, where they dump in that outlet, which does follow along the right-of-way ditch, if you will, it, it needs to be cleaned. So, but it can be done as a petition, as a drainage district, or quarter, you know, clean out. So the county would not technically have to, they have to say it's okay to clean that, you'd have to go out and, you know, double-check the grade and stuff as far as the, the road right-of-way is concerned.
Okay.
But the county doesn't necessarily have to clean it, because it can be, uh, just like a ditch cleanout.
So it could be a work order with trash, very dredge ditch.
Bingo. But you have to just kind of sign off on it, the county certainly doesn't care if, because it's a district that benefits from it. If you will not look at it, it's a, no reason for us to really clean it out at this point, but it's a big deal to the drainage district, it'll be a real big deal for this private ag well.
Well, I guess I don't.
I'm not really.
I don't, I don't know what, I don't know much about it.
It's real, it's very self-explanatory, if you look at it.
Okay.
It's very self-explanatory.
But the, the DD sixty-two, I assume there's tile line for DD sixty-two?
There is, it dumps it in there.
Dumps in the road ditch right now, or it dumps, or it crosses the right-of-way?
Crosses right-of-way from the north, dumps into the south. It's underwater, as we speak, so you know that the ditch needs to be cleaned out.
I mean, everything on the south side by Lannis is, is notoriously underwater.
Yeah.
I mean, he's got a bridge going from the Lannis old house to the trail. Back when Lannis used to live there, they would walk the trail quite a bit, but he's got himself a little.
Footbridge.
Little footbridge to get across it, because it's underwater so often.
Right, well, it, if you look at it, it's very self-explanatory, and that's, I've been dealing with this because of, thought like, you know, just facilitating this private well closure, and the landowners getting together, so it's, you know, that's the, probably the simplest part of it, is cleaning out that, because it's between the road and the old railroad right-of-way. So it's kind of a no-man's land, it's technically the right-of-way of the road.
It's on the south side, part of it's ours, and part of it would be conservation's.
Right.
Because they'd inherit fifty feet from the center of the trail in either direction.
I think they drove by that a year ago.
Yeah. But it, it lends itself to the drainage, drainage district project, more than a road ditch cleaning project.
Okay.
So do we have something that we could do that with? I mean, is it, do we have the equipment?
No, I mean, it's.
We have the fire done?
The south side's quite a bit wider than, I mean, as far as I know, that stretch of road, the county's only got thirty-three feet of right-of-way on either side from the center of the road.
Correct.
But the south side, it's, it's a very wide ditch, just because of the old railroad right-of-way, as well as the county's right-of-way. And I, I guess I'm not sure if you're talking about cleaning the whole width of that, I mean.
No, only as needed for the channel that, that's been there forever.
Okay.
But, versus, uh, you know, county cleaning that out, because there's some other talk, there's some ongoing, you know, discussion about extending that further to the west where the water seems to be going, there's problems with the outlet, which, beavers and obstructions and stuff where it goes now.
To go under the trail.
Goes underneath the trail.
Turn into the river.
And once it goes underneath the old right-of-way, it's just a.
A mess.
There's not, it doesn't have a clear path to the river where it ultimately goes.
Does it run to the river, or does it run to Lannis?
No, it runs to the river ultimately. And it's having an issue, but, so it's not a big deal county-wise, it, it's more to keep this on the drainage side. And, you know, you, the county would have to sign off that, yes, that's fine, because it is going to be part of the right-of-way.
Right.
But versus the county.
Which for the most part, if, if a drainage district has a, a, a drainage district or a drainage ditch that runs along the county's right-of-way, they do clean out without getting permission from the county.
Oh, you'll know about it.
But I mean, if this looks and smells like the county road ditch, you know, you'd pay more, more to look at it.
Well, you can take a look at it, but the thing of it is, when it, it's, it's all kind of incorporated in to this drainage well closure. And when that gets done, you know, this whole outlet area is going to need to be, you know, fixed.
This has nothing to do with actual drainage well closure, though, it's more of where the.
Well, yes and no, I mean, it, ultimately, if there was nothing to do with the drainage well closure, it is affecting DD sixty-two right now, so.
It's just more of a DD sixty-two problem, it's not a drainage, it's not part of the drainage well.
Not, it doesn't affect the drainage, but yes, it does, because it's going to outlet into the same area that the DD sixty-two is, so, but.
And, and, and I guess as far as secondary roads, we're just trying to get it so that whatever tiles don't just dump into the county road ditch, where it creates a professional wet zone that we have to deal with.
Yeah, because we don't allow private tiles to dump into road ditches.
Well, that's where this one's headed to, and so there's.
So that could be an issue, if that's what they want to do, is dump a private tile into a road ditch.
DD sixty-two is already outletting into that same area.
But that's not a private. So we'll have to look at it, we'll have to look at.
It's all ongoing, but we can go out there and look at it sometime, it's not a, you know, it, it doesn't need to be a, a big hairy deal. I mean, it, it's, there's existing drainage there, and so.
So is this something where the ag drainage well closure, they can tie into the existing DD sixty-two tile line?
No.
Because they're not incorporated in DD sixty-two.
True.
They're not part of DD.
And that wouldn't, and that wouldn't make sense for the closure project.
Well, I guess the way I'm looking at it is, for the closure project right now, you've got Idals, it's covering seventy-five percent of the cost of the closure.
Correct, correct.
And the county kicks in fifteen hundred dollars towards a road crossing, so Lubin Bowls would actually be making money by doing this crossing. I mean, whoever the contractor is, uh, the ones we use that we did most recently, I'm trying to think who they were. Jeff Love said that basically a tile crossing runs right at about fifteen hundred bucks their cost. So we're reimbursing them their actual cost of this crossing, so if Lubin Bowls do an actual crossing, we pay them fifteen hundred dollars. But Idals turns around and covers seventy-five percent of that, so they're actually.
It involves more than Lubin Bowls, it's a little joint landowner deal for the, for the drainage well closure.
Yeah, but we'll have to look at this harder, because we, we don't dump private tile lines into road ditches.
I hate to tell you.
They used to.
Well, I hate to tell you, but there's some that are.
And, and we don't anymore.
But, like I said, if you look at this, it isn't, it isn't quite like that.
All right, I'll have to look at.
But anyway, that's just something, you know, it's nothing obviously going to happen in the next week. But, it's something ongoing, and to get a little more information, you know, best thing would be to squat and take a look at it, so that you're aware of any effect on the right-of-way, which is virtually none. Have the drainage district take care of it.
Okay, and then, Peggy, if you want to call me when you guys get to budget, and I'll come back.
Yep.
All righty.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Bring lunch.
Bring lunch?
I brought an extra sleeping cookie.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Before we better go into drainage.
Yeah, I bet you'll be better. I'll make a motion, we go into drainage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ooh, carry, for the drainage.
Flipped down her sign, she's leaving us.
Yeah. Now, we'll have to take a look at it.
Well.
I, I know we drove by it a year.
Well, it's, you don't want to go there out of saying you can't dump into the right-of-way, because it, it's, it's its own unique deal. It's, tile's been outletting in there for, you know, years, it's an old system. And, it's just, and it needs to be cleaned out. knows, years. It's an old system. And it's just, and it needs to be cleaned out. And they've taken a hard look at it for the fact that of even going a little further west and where it goes underneath the right, the old right-of-way where the rail is.
Neposir and their things, so they better stock in the river.
Maybe with the, maybe with the.
Steamed spargus and mag, potatoes and a fruit.
Wanting to be more grounded in the, in the right-of-way.
Really?
So that it can get a decent outlet.
I'm on the wrong form.
Yeah.
If you do look at it, it's pretty tough.
They did have a pretty big breakfast this morning.
I've been there so many times and.
They, they run over. I have to leave.
They're just tiled in the road ditch.
Yes, appear they weren't done.
And it creates problems.
Right, well, this has been this way for, you know, a long, long time, so it's not, you know, there's just like, loaded someplace that somebody's tied.
The void could already load, so they'll come back up for it.
Drainage area.
Yeah, I remember there's, there's a pipe on the, to me, that, that road kinda runs on a diagonal there, don't it?
Well, they got a chef there, and I think he catered their employee banquet.
North Reese, that's the road out over the way the road's going there.
So, it must have been ran there and ran through Culver.
Well, for this, for the tile, it does have an outlet there right now. I'd say it just needs to be cleaned out, and then everybody knows. It's kinda like the EAT. Might be, you know, the problem is that where it's trying to get to is always obstructed. So, I think they're gonna be able to get this squared away a little bit and everything. One thing, I'll keep the water out of it. See, if you really wanna look at this, it's a very situation. If it gets on there right now, it just, it's just a mess. Rick, how's the weather up north?
Not good.
I didn't think so. I figure it's worse up there than it is here.
I'd say a little. Not, not much different, though.
Really?
Yeah, just blowing, more area blowing across the road up there than here, but some spots.
I really think over east, you got way more snow than we got.
Did you get five inches of snow?
Not yet.
No?
No.
Okay.
I wouldn't say so. Just blowing so much. We were up in Brainerd for the weekend. Twenty-eight below zero yesterday morning temperature. Yeah.
We're going in the wrong direction.
I know.
Coffee? What were you doing up there?
Well, we were in a snowmobile. We had, we went out for, Tony and I went out for an hour, and then Taylor and his wife went out for a couple hours.
For Rick, if it's twenty-eight below zero, then you're getting acclimated to rest of this week.
Oh, this week sounds terrible.
It does.
High of fifteen below or something coming up. Yeah, not pleasant.
Iowa.
There you go. Oh, yeah, I think they said then, like, Tuesday next week, forty degrees?
Yeah.
By Saturday, we could be.
Yeah.
Back to the.
High thirties.
You know, what we need is just to carry it today in the lot in front of us. Couple of days out, and we're all setting like zombie, ah, we're good.
Why don't you get.
Thirty below.
How is your truck in this weather?
Sitting in the shed right now.
Yeah, probably.
You know?
We should go.
Oh, yeah.
Anonymous.
I don't know what I'm gonna do for the next two days, but.
That's better.
You get, you get eleven, forty below, you know, it's just.
That's kinda scary, too, what that's gonna do.
It's rougher. It's, you got, oh, well, if you got bad fuel, that's why I.
You'll see him try it out on the road every now and then.
Yeah, if you see him sitting on the road, they're puffing, it's look like they're sending smoke signals out, and he's having issues, and it's not good.
Actually, no, they broke them, and then they left.
And the fuel tank, it gets just like jello.
I had to resolve to the.
It won't burn, it won't do nothing. So, you gotta find someplace warm, get it warmed up, and pull it out.
Get the ones that hang in the back and put a lot of that fuel.
Get it out of your fuel line, out of your fuel.
Oh, yeah.
What is it?
If diesels.
Only diesels, yeah.
I'm not worried about that.
Yeah, you're good.
When you get gas that has water in it, it'll, it'll be a mess.
What do you get, gas and water?
Bad gas stations.
Station is, it leaks in from the outside.
You can put that additive in, like, you know, like.
Heat.
I just put a little gas in my diesel.
Was that right?
A lot cheaper than for us, you know, to buy that stuff at seven or fifteen bucks a quart. Just pull up to the, that ninety-one octane, put a little of that, and then they always say, you can't put that in there. You just stay in there. I'll do the, it burns cleaner than the isopropyl stuff does.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, if your motor explodes, we'll know why.
Oh, yeah.
We'll know why.
Sure, she just.
If you got a, if you got two-hundred, well, I don't have any more. If you have a two-hundred gallon tank, the guy told me that you could put, if you keep it under ten percent, well, two-hundred gallons is.
It's twenty.
Twenty gallons, I'm not gonna put that much in it.
Yeah, good.
I've heard of people doing that.
You take your little flashlight and flash it in there, and you can see to the bottom of the tank, it's good fuel. But if it starts looking cloudy, you better start looking for a place to huddle up, because it can get real bad.
There's gonna be some of that.
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, here we go.
DD thirty-five outlet.
Okay.
Doug, right?
Oh, I did?
Yeah.
I love Mondays. Oh, boy. Um, I forget what I was doing. Doug, I spoke to him, and he said annexation is out of the question because they are not receiving any type of benefit right now. Um, we can do a easement or a contract, and that would be the best thing to do, is have our attorney, county attorney, he said, draw up an agreement between the landowner and, I guess it'd be Humboldt County Drainage District Thirty-five, and make an agreement as to how far back, what type of work will be done, and any future maintenance or whatever, that we have the right to go in and access that. We won't be able to pay them any thing as far as, I think we can pay them for damages, but other than an easement. They will not pay towards the district. They will owe nothing. So, it's pretty easily done, I guess.
And so, once the work would be done, then it'd basically just be on a maintenance a couple times, so every three, four, or five years, we go in there, look and see and make sure the little trees aren't coming back.
Or we hire, what's her name, to kinda keep the brush down.
Brush, weed control specialist.
Like we do on all of our other ditches. They may have to hit that every year for several years.
That would be probably the most cost-effective way to do it after the initial lead-up, by far and away, keep it from going back in and doing more work.
Well, the one property owner, he already gave, basically, didn't he, Jeff? He didn't have a problem with us going in there and take care of it, so.
Before I forget about it, and I know Bruce responded to it, and wherever it came from, what was the business, any relationship to this about a meeting the week of February four?
Me?
Yes.
Oh, no, I don't know. Um, I just spoke to Ben out there, and he said he asked regarding the thirty-five outlet thing. He talked to them, and they told him it's because of some, what was it? He said something, they were doing a study at one time, and they had to quit.
Yeah, because they ran out of funding.
Ran out of funding.
Flood lane study of some kind.
Yeah, so it must have been some time ago. I don't.
Yeah.
I know you read that email.
I read the email, but I, and I.
Is that in conjunction with this?
No.
Nope.
What's the conjunction with?
That's FEMA and Homeland Security, and they wanna have a meeting.
Did you get?
In Humboldt County. Yeah, sent to me originally.
That's what I, okay, so just to double check, it has nothing to do specifically with this outlet?
No, no.
Okay.
It's our understanding to the whole river bottom and the whole.
Okay, okay. So, it's a general.
Just general flood.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, you were thinking maybe it was just the timeliness.
Well, yeah, and it didn't, it wasn't real clear, and it kinda came with, we know we've been discussing this, so, yeah. Okay, that clarifies, so that doesn't, bad pun, muddy the waters on this, on this one.
All right.
The week of the fifth was what you.
Week of the fifth, I think it is. I think we.
See, um.
You just put in there, what would anybody schedule?
When we purchase the right-of-way over tile projects, what do we pay for that roughly?
I don't have a breakdown, but I got to eat.
I think eleven hundred bucks an acre.
It has more than that, actually. That's for crop damage.
That's crop damage.
Yeah, for the five years of.
Everybody's scheduled.